All right, so we had a couple of questions left over from the exam review. So I'm going to cover most of these. So the first one is talking about limiting reactants. So nobody asked about the stoichiometry ones, that's okay. So for limiting reactants, so let's say we had a chemical reaction and we're going to talk about hydrogen combining with nitrogen to form ammonia. So in doing this, we do first need to make sure we balance our chemical reaction. So when I look, I have nitrogen and there's two of them, so therefore I need two nitrogens over on this side. That then gives me two times three, which is six hydrogens, so therefore I need three hydrogens on this side to make sure I balance out. So that's three times two, also six. So now my chemical reaction is balanced. Now granted, I of course have gone about this in a bit of a backwards way and I need to also give you all a question. So the question might read something like this. Eight grams of hydrogen and 22 grams of nitrogen are in a flask. How much ammonia is produced? So I understand that I started this question off with, hey, we're going to do limiting reactant. But let's go ahead and talk about how I know this is a limiting reactant problem. I was given eight grams of hydrogen. Hydrogen is one of my reactants. I was also given 22 grams of nitrogen and nitrogen is my other reactant. Then I was asked about ammonia and that's the product. The fact that I have information on both reactants, so the fact that I have info on both reactants is what tells me this is a limiting reactant problem. Because I don't know which one's more important. So when we talk about limiting reactant problems, the whole notion is that I'm going to run out of one of these two things first. So I like to often talk about things like baking a cake. And if I'm going to go to bake a cake, let's say I need flour and I need eggs. And let's say I have something like one cup of flour and I have for some reason 46 eggs. That's a lot of eggs. I am clearly going to run out of the flour before I run out of eggs. And so the grand question is, how many cakes can I make with what I have? So I would be looking for cake, in this case, I'm looking for the product. And I'm given information about the flour and I'm given information about the eggs. So I have information about both reactants, looking for a product. So as far as how we're going to do this, there are a lot of different ways to do this. So I'm going to go ahead and do it my favorite way first. And then I will go ahead and do it probably both other ways, just so that you guys have all those examples. So the way I actually like to do this is this entire reaction is one reaction. We could also call this thing one recipe. So thinking about my cakes, so this is one reaction or one recipe, so the whole thing is one. So when I'm thinking about how much I'm going to make, I could actually, instead of thinking about this in terms of the product, I could think about this in terms of my recipe. Now, what this is going to do for us is I'm going to be able to go and think about everything just in terms of the recipe. I don't have to worry about the product quite yet. Now, in order to do this, the other thing is everything that I've been given has been given in grams, which means I also am going to need some molar masses. So I'm just going to take a moment to put those down. So hydrogen is going to be 2.016 grams per mole. Nitrogen is going to be 28.02 grams per mole. Ammonia is going to be somewhere around 17. 17, 24, 34. Oh, 34. We'll go with that. So these are the numbers I'm going to use for the molar masses. When and if I need them. So from here, what I can go ahead and do is I'm going to get everything in terms of this one reaction or one recipe. So for this, I'm going to start with the amount they gave me. So I have eight grams of hydrogen. And then for every gram of hydrogen, for 2.16 grams of hydrogen, I have one mole of hydrogen. And then I'm going to go ahead and divide by the stoichiometric coefficient. Because there's three moles of hydrogen for every one reaction or every one recipe. So since I have grams, I'm dividing by the molar mass, then I'm dividing by the stoichiometric coefficient. And that's going to get me something in recipes or in reactions. So I'm just dividing the grams by the molar mass, dividing again by the stoichiometric coefficient. And that gets me moles of reaction. Now, I'm not done yet because the whole point is to compare my reactants. So all of that was from the hydrogen. So I can see over here that I started off with my eight grams of hydrogen. And so this number is how much we would use if we used up all of my hydrogen. So next, I want to figure out the same idea for my nitrogen. So I'm going to do the exact same calculation, but now we're doing nitrogen. So therefore, I'm going to still divide by the molar mass, but now the molar mass of nitrogen. And I'm also going to divide by the stoichiometric coefficient, but of nitrogen. And I still have to go back up and see what my stoichiometric coefficient was. It's one, that's into and one. It's right in front of it, the invisible one. So this is then 22 divided by 28. 22 divided by 28.02. So this is what we get when we look at the nitrogen. So this is the nitrogen and these are the moles of reaction I could make if I used up all of my nitrogen. Now, what we're looking for when we're looking for limiting reactant is we want to compare these two numbers. So we want to compare the moles of reaction to each other. And whichever number is smaller is going to be our limiting reactant. So this 0.785 is going to be our limiting reactant. So technically, our limiting reactant is our nitrogen. And then what we're going to be using is we're going to use this mole of reaction for all of our other calculations. Thinking back to that cake analogy. So if I have a cup of flour and I have 47 eggs or 46 eggs, however many eggs I said I had. And let's say I could somehow make like two cakes with my one cup of flour. But I could probably make like 20 cakes with the 46 eggs. Clearly, the two cakes is the best I can do because I'm going to run out of the flour. So the smaller number, the two cakes, represents how much I can actually make. The smaller number here is in moles of reaction, not in cakes, but it's still talking about the least you can make. Now, I'm going to use this mole reaction number. I worked to get these moles of reaction, I'm going to use these numbers. Because the question wanted me to find how much ammonia is produced. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to use my mole of reaction because that gives me information. That's how many times I can perform this recipe. How many times I can do anything in this particular reaction. And in one reaction, so now I'm just going to go essentially backwards from what we did before. So now as I'm dividing, I'm going to multiply, I'm going to multiply by the stoichiometric coefficient. So in one reaction, I have two moles of ammonia. And then for every one mole of ammonia, I have 17, what did I decide that was 034? So before I divided, now I'm multiplying because I now I'm starting with moles. So since I'm starting with moles, I am multiplying by the stoichiometric coefficient and I'm multiplying by the molar mass to get an answer in grams. 26.74 grams ammonia. So there's, there is limiting reactant example. Now, just for the record, this, these numbers of mole reaction also work no matter what you need to find. So if you need to find excess reactant, you can actually still use these values. Because again, they relate back to the whole thing. So if I wanted to do something like finding the excess, what I could do is I could actually subtract the two mole reaction numbers and the difference would be my mole reaction of excess and then I just have to backtrack to the hydrogen. Because since nitrogen is limiting, we know that hydrogen is in excess. So what I'm going to do now is I'm actually going to repeat this problem, but I'm going to solve it a different way. Because some of you would really like to see it done maybe the way they did it in PLTL or maybe the way you did it in high school. So first of all, the way I just did it is my favorite way. I like it that way because it actually is one of the faster ways to do it because there's fewer steps to find the answer. So mole reaction means you don't have to worry about going all the way to grams until you're ready to do so. So there's actually fewer steps in what I just showed you. But since I kept talking about recipes and cakes and all of that jazz, one of the other ways to do this problem is to basically take both of my reactants and the question asks for ammonia and so you just shove everything to see how much ammonia it makes. And you basically just do a stoichiometry setup twice. So what that looks like, I'm going to go ahead and select everything so that I can copy it and move it. I would also really like this stuff down here. There it goes, excellent. So all we're going to do is, hopefully it looks very similar, but we're starting the problem all over again. So I'm going to take my eight grams of hydrogen. And I don't like grams, I need, my chemical reaction is all in moles, so I still need to divide by the molar mass. And from my hydrogen, now what I'm going to do is since I care about ammonia, the problem told me so. Problem asked me about ammonia, so I'm going to take my three moles of hydrogen and go to two moles of ammonia. So I've got one mole of hydrogen for every three moles of hydrogen, I have two moles of ammonia. Then we're going to go ahead and go to grams, the, I meant to write in the question how much in grams ammonia is produced. So we're just going to pretend that I remembered to write that down and we're going to go ahead and solve. So eight divided by 2.016 times two divided by three times 17.034 is 45.06 grams of ammonia. Now, we're not done yet because that's not really an answer. That's just that, so that is how much we could make if we got to use all of the hydrogen. But we don't know that because we've got a lot of numbers. So we're going to do the exact same math, but now with nitrogen. So I'm going to start off with my 22.0 grams of nitrogen. I'm going to divide by the molar mass of nitrogen, 28.02 grams in one mole of nitrogen. I'm going to use my stoichiometric figures from the problem to go from nitrogen to ammonia. And I see I have one mole of nitrogen for every two moles of ammonia. So that's going to be one on the bottom with my nitrogen, two on the top for my ammonia. Then for every one mole of ammonia, I'm again using the molar mass. And you can do all of this math step by step. I prefer to do it all in one go because, one, it helps me keep straight where I'm going. Because this is all grams of nitrogen, grams of nitrogen, moles of nitrogen, moles of nitrogen, moles of ammonia, moles of ammonia, ending in grams. So this also helps me make sure that I've done all the steps I need to do and ensures that I've got it all in one place. And I also don't have to worry nearly so much about all my decimal places because I did it all in one go. So I don't have to copy down numbers and worry about accidentally writing a number down incorrectly. 26.7 grams of ammonia. Again, in between these two numbers, so these two numbers are then what we're comparing. And again, we're looking for the smaller one, so that part's the same. So this is a limiting reactant problem, I am looking for the smaller number. So this is the amount of ammonia I actually produce and nitrogen is my limiting reactant. So nitrogen is limiting reactant and it makes the smaller amount of stuff. If we actually scroll back up, so I've got 26.7 grams of ammonia, the other thing we should be able to see is it's the exact same number as before. So just in case you were curious, you do get the same answer even when you use a different technique. So that's another way to do limiting reactant. Works great as long as you're solving for the product. We solve for the product a lot, so I don't mind doing that one. But for those of you at home keeping track, you may have remembered that I said that there was another way to do this. So we are going to do this one more time. By the way, this is the main reason that I was trying to not do this during the exam review is because usually when I start doing limiting reactant, I always have to pick one, right? So no matter what I do, I can't do all three of these simultaneously. And so it worries people when they start to see something done a different way. But I can't actually do all three of these simultaneously. Okay, so the last one. The last one is the one I think that PLTL uses. It's actually the way that I was taught. There's reasons I don't like it. Has a lot to do with it was my first year of teaching and I was not as good at teaching then as I was, as I am now. So I think maybe if I had better skills, I would, I would like it more. So what I'm doing is I'm making a table. Because what's going to happen is we're going to assess by all of the reactants. So the problem gave me both hydrogen and nitrogen. So I have eight grams of hydrogen. And from the problem, I have 22 grams of nitrogen. So these are just from the problem. So, so my half column is from the problem. I didn't make anything up, I haven't done any calculations yet. The only thing I did is take the numbers out of the problem and plug them into my table. That's the only thing I did. Now, I am going to do some calculations because now I want to put in this needs required set. And so what I'm going to do is let's say I start with my eight grams of hydrogen. What I'm actually trying to ask myself is how much nitrogen I need to completely react the hydrogen? So I'm going to start off with my eight grams of hydrogen, of hydrogen. I'm still using the same molar masses because I've got to get to moles in order to do this problem. And I'm still using my stoichiometric coefficients, which you'd think I'd remember by now, but I don't, I do that. Three moles of hydrogen in one mole of ammonia. That was hydrogen, three moles of hydrogen in one mole of nitrogen. So what I'm doing is I'm trying to figure out if I could react all of my hydrogen, how much nitrogen do I need? So in one mole of nitrogen, I get 28.02 grams. It's okay if you don't have that memorized, but there it is. So then I can go ahead and do this math, eight divided by 2.016 divided by three times 28.02 gets me 37.06. So this is the new number I have found, 36.03, 7.06 grams. So this is the amount that I need, the amount of nitrogen I need to react all of my hydrogen. And what you can see right here is I need more than I have. So this number is, 37 is bigger than 22. From this information, this information alone, I actually now know that into is the limiting reactant. So that's all the information I need, I can actually move forward with the problem from here. I'll come back and do one more thing, but for now, I want to show you the slimmed down version of this technique. So I have identified the limiting reactant. But the problem didn't want me to identify the limiting, well, I needed to identify the limiting reactant. But the problem didn't ask for that specific information. I now need to know how much ammonia is produced. So now what I'm going to do is since I know nitrogen is limiting, now I can take the nitrogen and solve for ammonia. Because I know that nitrogen is the important thing. Nitrogen is what's going to run out of first, so I can use the nitrogen information to solve. So I'm going to go ahead and take those 22.0 grams of nitrogen. And I'm in grams, but I don't need grams, so it's 28.2 grams of nitrogen in one mole of nitrogen. And then from the problem, scrolling back up again, one mole of nitrogen, ammonia, going to ammonia now, it's two moles of ammonia. This is the one thing that I missed about just doing things on a document camera. It's all eight and a half by 11 piece of paper, it's a little easier to keep all this together. And then in one mole of ammonia, I have 17.03, oh, three, four, oh, three, four grams. So 22 divided by the molar mass to get moles multiplied by two because it's undivided by one because that's our stoichiometric coefficient and multiplied by the molar mass again to go back to grams, 26.7 grams of ammonia. I know it's been a hot minute, so let's, so this is my answer, so I'm going to scroll back up. 26.7 grams, oh, look, 26.7 grams from the other problem, that was also the answer. And in that first one, 26.7 grams, look at that, it's, it's like all of it gets you the same answer no matter what you do. It's amazing. So no matter what you do, you get the same answer. Now, there is one more thing I want to do with this one, even though we solved for the right answer, we solved for the right answer. Because I know the question often is, well, now wait a minute, I left part of this table blank. And what if we had solved for the nitrogen first? So I'm just going to go ahead and pretend like maybe instead of starting with the hydrogen, I started with the nitrogen. If we do that, then again, to fill in this last hole, which we do not need to do, right? Like we already, we already got the answer, we've already found the correct multiple choice response and we have moved on with our lives. But just in case we didn't, so 22 grams of nitrogen, I'm going to figure out how much hydrogen I need. So 28.02 grams of hydrogen, nitrogen of into in one mole of nitrogen and then from the stoichiometric coefficients, one mole of nitrogen, three moles of hydrogen, one mole of nitrogen, three moles of hydrogen. And then there's one mole of hydrogen and 2.016 grams of hydrogen. So this is how many moles of nitrogen, or how many grams, pardon me. Because whatever you're in, you need that thing to be the same. So if I was given moles, I can do everything in moles. If I'm given grams, I need to do everything in grams. So as long as it's the same unit, you can compare things. So I get 4.75 grams of hydrogen. So that's what I'm going to go put over here, 4.75 grams of hydrogen. Now, what I can see here is the amount that I need is less than what I have. So this is one of those times where you're like, oh, okay, in order to make a cake, I, I need like three eggs and I have 47 eggs. So I clearly have plenty of eggs. So I have enough hydrogen. So since I have enough hydrogen, that means that nitrogen is the limiting reactant. So, so if I have enough of one, this, whatever I have enough of is the excess. So therefore nitrogen is limiting. So we could still figure out the same information with the same amount of math, even if we had selected the other reactant. So just because we selected to do one of them, either one would have worked first. All right, that, my friends, is limiting reactant. Where are we? Can't we do an example of finding limiting reactant? We did. What else is on here? Oh, um, let's go ahead, since we did limiting reactant and we've done that problem so many times. Let's go ahead and throw an experimental yields on top of that. So a lot of times what that looks like is instead of whatever all of the stuff we just did, all it's going to do is it's going to give us one more piece of information and actually, let me grab. This is our, the, did they, did we already do this? So somebody actually asked for two specific questions off of the 2019 exam. And one of them is a percent yield question. So I am actually just going to use that for percent yields. Because that way I don't have to make it up. So first up in the Oswald process for producing nitric acid gives you the following reaction. I have information here, 3.2 moles of ammonia reacts with 4.5 moles of oxygen gas to produce 2.9 moles of nitrous oxide. What's the percent yields in this reaction? So first of all, this is moles of ammonia, that's moles of ammonia. This is 4.5 moles of oxygen, that's moles of oxygen. This is a limiting reactant problem. Because I have information about both reactants, I have information about at least two reactants, this is a limiting reactant problem. Now, the problem continues and it actually gets me moles of a product. This one, right here, and then it asks, what is the percent yields of nitrous oxide in this reaction? So this is the point honestly where I would highly recommend, since what I'm about to do is another limiting reactant example, I highly recommend you pause the video and you try out the limiting reactant for yourself. You just saw me do it three different ways, now is the time to pick the one that you like the best and see if it works for you. Now, I already fessed up that I have a favorite, so I'm going to do it my favorite way. So especially because I'm all in moles, oh, this makes my life even a little easier. So all I have to do is go to moles of reaction. So all I have to do is divide these things by a stoichiometric coefficient. So 3.2 moles of ammonia divided by four. Gets me 0.8 mole reaction. Then I've got 4.5 moles of oxygen divided by its stoichiometric coefficient, that's five. Gives me 0.9 mole reaction, that means that nitrogen, sorry, ammonia is limiting reactant because point eight is smaller than point nine. So now I get to go ahead and I'm going to use that mole of reaction value, my point eight number to go ahead and finish the problem. So point eight moles of reaction and in my reaction, I'm looking for four moles of the nitrous oxide. So in one reaction, I get four moles of NO. So I just need my point eight times four, means I get 32, or sorry, 3.2, 3.2 moles, you know? So that's how, so we refer to this number that I just solved for as a theoretical yield. I did it all with a pen and paper. Uh, I did it all with a pen and paper. This is assuming everything goes perfectly. This is the theoretical yields. So what I am gonna do now is the problem told me I actually get two point nine moles. So something happened. I lost some. Um, I probably hopefully sound very casual about this by now. Hopefully y'all have done a couple of labs. And you know, stuff sticks to filter paper. You accidentally put stuff down the drain. Yeah, things happen. So all I'm gonna do is now I'm gonna solve for percent yields. So I'm gonna take my two point nine value. Divide it by three point two and multiply it by a hundred percent. So this is the actual divided by the theoretical times a hundred percent. So two point nine divided by three point two times a hundred. And I get ninety point six percent. And they didn't give me the point six, so my six rounds up to ninety one and I get that answer. Uh, so one word to the wise is do be careful and keep an eye out because we will give you problems in moles. Because moles are faster. You don't have to worry about going to grams. If everything is in moles, the problem should be faster. So keep an eye out for that. So therefore we have done a percent yields problem. Goodie for us. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and grab the other problem that was requested. I have to go back and scroll back up to all the questions. Because I don't remember what it was. Four and seven. I just did seven. Let's do four. This is the other question of the exam. Consider the combustion of butane. How many grams of carbon dioxide are produced when twelve point six grams of butane are reacted with an excess of oxygen? So this is the kind of problem we actually haven't done yet. Um, in the video, uh, I think I might have done one of the exam review, but I can't remember. I've slept since then. So what we are gonna do is this is a just plain stoichiometry. So this is asking us for grams of carbon dioxide, which is over here. Uh, and it gives us twelve point five grams of this thing. They call it butane. That is what it's called, that thing. And then it just tells us that it has an excess of oxygen. Um, so that's lovely information. It basically means that we get to ignore the oxygen. We need it to make sure our reaction is balanced and everything's happy, but we, we don't care about it. It's not gonna come into play in our calculations. Uh, they gave us coefficients here, so our reaction is already balanced. That's great. So all I'm gonna do is start with what they gave me, which is twelve point five grams of butane. So I'm in grams. I need moles to use my stoichiometric coefficients. So this is five fifty eight point twelve grams in one mole of butane. Then using my coefficients, there's two moles of butane. In eight moles of carbon dioxide. Then what is that one of four? It went grams. It went in grams. So since it wanted grams, I'm gonna do grams. Um, in one mole of carbon dioxide, there are forty four point oh one grams of CO2. So twelve point five divided by fifty eight point one two. Times eight divided by two times forty four point oh one. Um, and y'all can do these stepwise again. So if you wanted to go from grams to moles of butane. And get that number and then go from moles of butane to moles of carbon dioxide. That's the second step here. And then we're going from moles of carbon dioxide to grams of carbon dioxide. You get thirty seven point nine grams CO2. Oh, look, there's the answer. So look at us doing math stuff. Yay, math stuff. So one of the questions that I definitely was asked on here, uh, is uh, so we did four and seven of the practice exam. Uh, we did limiting reactant and percent yields. Um. We did math problems, limiting reactant. We just didn't do balancing chemical reactions. Um, so balancing chemical reactions, although I did it really quickly, um. So with balancing chemical reactions, the whole goal is to get all of the elements the same on both sides. Um, so if I have this reaction. The goal is to get the same number of sulfurs and the same number of oxygens on both sides. Now, when you start looking at this one, you're like sulfur, same on both sides. Great. And we don't get to mess with the subscripts. So those little twos and little three have to stay there. Uh, but I can add coefficients. I can add big numbers in front, but that's all I get to do. So here, what I notice is that I've got four oxygen. So I've got sulfur. I've got one on each side. Cool. Oxygen, I've got three on one side and I've got two plus two, which is four on the other side. Now most people will get to this eventually, but there is a little math trick that if you were taught this can be helpful. So I'm gonna teach it to you now. Four is an even number. Three is an odd number. Since the only thing we really get to do here is multiplication. Because both of my oxygens on the left hand side, on the reactant sides are also twos, which means these are also even numbers. The only way to make these things be the same number, which is the goal in the end, is if they're both even numbers. Notice I said that they're both even numbers because you can't multiply an even number by an odd number and get an odd number. It doesn't happen. Think about it. Try it. Um, but an even times an even. Even times an even gives you an even number. And even times an odd number also gets you an even number. So the only way to make these the same is to fix the odd number. So what I can do with this information is I can be like, well, the only way to make these the same is if they're both even numbers. So I'm gonna go ahead and multiply my product by two. It's the lowest even number there is. And that's what we're gonna start with because that's gonna fix this problem of evens and odds. So now I have six oxygens. I also messed, oh, I didn't mess up. I had to change something. And now I have two sulfers. So because of that, I'm gonna go ahead and fix my sulfers. And now that I've fixed my sulfers, now it's time to see where my oxygens on the reactant side are. So this is two times two, which is four plus two, which is six. Uh, so that's how many oxygens I have and that's still how many oxygens I have. So this is, so this is now balanced chemical reaction as it is. So balancing chemical reactions does take practice. Uh, highly recommend the end of chapter questions for balancing chemical reactions. It should help you a fair amount. Balancing chemical equations. Can I go over the math we need to know in chapter eight? I did. So the math you need to know in chapter eight, there's four things. Um, which we've already now done one of everything. Uh, so the math in chapter eight, uh, what you need is you need balancing. Chemical reactions. Uh, which we just did. You need stoichiometry. Uh, which the one that we did that looked like just a stoichiometry problem was this number four from the twenty nineteen exam. So we did do that. Uh, limiting reactant. That's what we started with. That took a really long time. Uh, and it was also number seven on the old exam. So we did that one. Then last but not least, uh, was percent yields. Uh, and that was also the number seven on the twenty nineteen exam. So that's at least one example of all of the math from chapter eight. That is all of chapter eight that you are responsible for. That's it. That's all. You're done. No more. That's all of chapter eight. So we did all the math in chapter eight. What are the practice problems for chapters eight, seven, eight, and twelve? Like the practice exam practice. Other than the exam questions. But I couldn't see the ones for chapter eight and twelve. Um. I don't remember twenty nineteen. Um. So I'm on exams. I'm on the third exam for fall twenty nineteen. Um. And, oh, I can't scribble on it because I didn't import it into OneNote. It was like, why won't it let me write on this? Oh, I didn't. As I boo booed. Um. So, hold on. One note. Up. Insert as printout. Now I just need to increase. There you go. Okay. So so this is exam three from twenty nineteen. Uh, so number one, this is chapter seven. Um, number two is also chapter seven. Number three is chapter eight. Number four is chapter eight. Number five is chapter seven. Number six is chapter seven. Number seven is chapter eight. Um. Number eight is chapter eight. Uh, nine is chapter seven. Sodium fluoride need to produce number of moles. This is chapter eight. Uh, bent geometry, that's seven. A hydrogen bond is chapter seven. Three carbon atoms. This is seven. Valence bond theory, that's seven. This is chapter eight. Boiling point, chapter twelve. Seven, seven. Eight. Seven. Eight. Seven. Eight. Seven. Eight. Chapter twelve. Um, seven, chapter seven. Twenty nine is seven. Thirty is seven. Thirty one is chapter eight. So hopefully that helps, uh, with being able to identify questions. So they are, they are in there. Um, the main thing that is missing is there's nothing in here on vapor pressure. Um, so we typically pull boiling points out of chapter twelve. Uh, this year we are pulling for the first time, uh, vapor pressure as well as viscosity and surface tension. So the only real additions that we need, and I think this was somewhere in the, oh, gosh, um. In the questions that were asked, which no one can read now, they're too small. Um. So the ones for chapter eight are in there. The ones for chapter twelve, uh, those are really gonna be boiling point and vapor pressure. So when boiling point increases intermolecular, or sorry. When intermolecular forces increase, boiling point increases. When intermolecular forces increase, vapor pressure decreases. So those are opposite of each other. Um. So what's next? Um. How to find how many bonds are in element and its bonds to using valence bond theory. Um. So valence bond theory. Valence bond theory states, actually, can I grab this? Cause I'm not finished yet, but I've done a lot of these. Um, actually I want, I want it all. I want my little check marks too. Please keep my check marks. Yay, kept my check mark. Um, didn't manage to keep all of that. That's okay. Okay. Um, how many bonds are in element's bond state of valence bond theory, for example, beryllium? Um, so here's beryllium. When we look at it on a periodic table. Um. It is hanging out element number four. Uh, so it is in, uh, period two. It is an alkali earth metal. And if we were to draw its, um. Electron configuration, its orbital notation, it looks like this. Valence bond theory states that you need an electron alone in an orbital to form a bond. Which beryllium does not have. So beryllium would be predicted to have no bonds. Beryllium would be predicted to have no bonds as it is. That's the reason why when we start to talk about hybridization. We change this. But the question just asked about beryllium, how many bonds does it have by valence bond theory? And by valence bond theory, this says no bonds. Now we know that's not true. We know that's not true. And that is why when we start to talk about things like beryllium chloride. Which is a real molecule and does exist. We started to talk about things like SP hybridization. Because what happens is we go ahead and excite and elevate one of the electrons out of the two S into the two P. And then we use beryllium as having still two electrons in the one S. But then we give beryllium two electrons into SP orbitals, leaving the original P orbitals alone and empty. Um, so hybridization comes to the rescue. Because valence bond theory predicts that this doesn't exist. And it does. So we're using the hybridization to explain things we know to be true. But valence bond theory claims beryllium has no bonds. Not true. It does. And we can explain that with hybridization. All right. This one. Are we supposed to use, so three, are we supposed to use vectors to figure out whether molecules polar or nonpolar? Or is there another way to do it? So vectors are a physics thing. The way that we've been describing polarity is by thinking about them. And technically we've not been using the term vectors, but we've been using the concept of vectors. For example. BF3. Beryllium trifluoride. Looks like this. It is trigonal planar. There are a hundred and twenty degrees in between all of my fluorines. And when we think about these, fluorine is electronegative. So fluorine is gonna pull electron density towards it. This has polar bonds. But because they're all pulling equally. This is gonna be a nonpolar molecule. So this idea that I'm saying the words pulling. And I'm saying that they're all pulling equally. That is a, not the best, but that is a conceptual description of a vector. So this is the weird things with vectors and polarity is you can do polarity without vectors. We've been doing polarity without using that term. But we are. But we are actually using that concept. Um, we're just not doing a great job of the actual concept. Um, so because the way that I usually get people to think about this is it's like if I have a water bottle. Um, and I've got three people that are all trying to pull equally at this water bottle. Um, so everybody's got a hand on it somehow. And everybody's evenly spaced all the way around the water bottle. And everyone's tugging exactly the same at the water bottle. If everyone's tugging exactly the same at the water bottle, then no one gets the water bottle. Nothing moves. That's again, an idea of vectors, but done with a concept, done without. The math. So at this point, if you still have questions about polarity, which. Scroll up, didn't I do polarity? Sorry, I also did polarity in my office hour last night. So I'm, I'm starting to have major memory problems. Um, with what I did and what I didn't do. Uh, boiling point. Polarity measures, so we must have done some polarity. Um, watches and lines. Octet, valence bond theory, hey, I did that again. Um. Did the math exams, okay. So I understand that people always want to see more and more and more and more examples of polarity. Um, at this point, I'm going to recommend especially office hours to get more specific examples. Uh, or again, the end of chapter questions uh to help you guys out with that. Can we go over the different interactions dipole, dipole, dispersion, hydrogen bond and ion dipole? So those are your intermolecular forces. I think that's better. So these are your intermolecular forces. Uh, ion dipole or even ion ion is the strongest. The number one. Then your ion dipole, then your hydrogen bond is next strongest. Then your dipole dipole and dispersion is your weakest. As far as how you find what's going on with any of these. And how you know that you have them. Let's start with the strongest one with ion ion. So when I'm looking at a periodic table. I know that my alkali metals, that my alkali earth metals, that my transition metals are all metals. And I know that my noble gases, my halogens, my chalcogens, nitrogen, carbon are all non-metals. So I know when I have a metal and a non-metal. When I have a metal and a non-metal, let's say I have something like magnesium and chlorine. This is made up of ions. This is an ionic compound. This is a concept we expect you to remember from chapter five. So this is made up of a magnesium plus two ion and it's made up of two chloride ions. What holds this molecule, this holds this compound, pardon me, together are charges. Positive and negative charges. That is an ion ion. So yes, you are supposed to be able to pick out when it's an ionic compound. And yes, you therefore can figure out that that's an ion ion interaction. When it's an ion dipole, you still have to have something that's charged. And then it's just going to interact with a polar molecule. So something like, say, water. Is going to have that partial negative part and that partial positive part. And that's an ion dipole interaction. So anytime we say the word dipole, we mean that there is a polar molecule. So figuring out if a molecule is polar is important because that's how you're going to know if you have the potential for an ion dipole interaction. And also how you're going to know that it's a dipole dipole interaction. So a dipole dipole interaction is from polar molecules. So dipole dipole is going to be when you have polar molecules. Polar molecules exhibit dipole dipole interactions. All that is, is partial positives and partial negatives. So if I had, say, chlorine bonded to a carbon with a whole bunch of hydrogens. My hydrate, my chlorine here should be partial negative. There should be more electron density at that chlorine than there are at the hydrogens. So the fact that I have a partial negative where my chlorine is. And partial positives where my hydrogens are, is what gives me a dipole dipole interaction. Because when I have a second one of these molecules, I would expect the negative part of the chlorine to be attracted to the positive part of the hydrogen. So all dipole dipole interaction really is, is still positives and negatives being attracted to each other. But when there's a dipole dipole, they're not whole charges. So ions are whole charges. Magnesium two plus. Chloride, one minus. Dipole dipole. Partial charges, we're drawing the little curly Q thingy before we draw a charge. It's kind of charged and it's a, it's a little, it's, it's there. There's more negative stuff over on the chlorine than there is on the hydrogens, it's more. But you don't get to write just boom, negative or boom, positive. It's, it's a little, it's a little bit, it was a little bit. Dipole dipole. After dipole dipole comes hydrogen bonding. Hydrogen bonding is just a very specific type of dipole dipole. So first of all, if you have a hydrogen bond. You always have dipole dipole. It's in the definition. Because a hydrogen bond is just a specific type of dipole dipole. It's not a Venn diagram, they're concentric circles. Dipole dipole, hydrogen bond. One is inside the other. So we usually use water for this. I'm tired of using water, let's use ammonia. What I have to have is I have to have a hydrogen covalently bonded to a nitrogen, an oxygen or a fluorine. Because this is going to pull even more electron density away from my hydrogen, making my hydrogen a little extra positive. Making my nitrogen still negative. And the hydrogen is going to be a little bit smaller than it usually is because there's even less electron density around it. So then when I have another molecule. And I draw this in between, my hydrogen bond is represented by a dashed line. Represented. By dashed line. Now, one of the other things with hydrogen bonding. Is to keep in mind that. This molecule does not have hydrogen bonding. Because it's got the oxygen and it's got the hydrogens, but they're not connected to each other. So because hydrogen and oxygen are not connected. There is no hydrogen bonding. This does have a dipole though. That oxygen is going to pull more electron density towards it. Uh, this is going to have partial negative charge, these will have partial positive charges. And this does have dipole dipole interactions. So that is true, that is in there. The last one is dispersion forces. And dispersion forces, everything has these. So I haven't been drawing them as I go along, but everything has dispersion forces. So I could just copy and paste this lovely dispersion words. And it could be like bam, dispersion up there. And where was my, where was my ammonia? Boom, dispersion up there. This also has dipole dipole interactions. And I don't know where my, oh, my other examples are way up there, aren't they? Oh, well. Uh, but anyway. I use copy and paste the word dispersion and anywhere I see a molecule, boom, dispersion forces. Uh, now there are ways to tell when something has greater dispersion forces than something else. So for example, if I have this one, two, three, four, five carbon molecule versus one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven car- carbon molecule, the more carbons it has, the greater the dispersion forces. So this one on the right has greater dispersion forces. There are other ways to tell the differences because uh, there's also things like looking at your noble gases. And so things like uh helium versus xenon. Xenon also has greater dispersion forces. I'll turn to a periodic table in a moment. Um, so helium is up here at the top, xenon is down here at the bottom. Xenon has a larger electron cloud. It's a larger atom. It'll have more dispersion forces. Um, these squiggly lines that I just drew. Everywhere where there's a bend and an end, there's a carbon. So this is a carbon and 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 this is a carbon. And here 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 and here. And all of those carbons should have complete octets. Which means if I wanted to draw them in, I'd fill them in with hydrogens. And perhaps you're trying to get the idea of why we have that shorthand notation. Because I don't even know that I'm going to have the patience to finish drawing in all of these hydrogens also. Now my molecules are way messier than they used to be. It was so pretty when it was just a squiggly line. And you could see that there was more on one squiggle line than on the other squiggle line. And now I don't know that I can even find my squiggle line anymore, anyway. But that's line angle formulas. Carbons represented by lines and you fill in hydrogens when you need a complete octet. I lost my questions again. Oh, there they are. Interactions, done. Uh, vapor pressure and its relation to boiling point. Um. So here's the deal. These things. Um, not on exam three. They are not. Um, so. I'm going to take a brief pause to just take a sip of my coffee. Uh, and then I will actually go ahead and keep going. But that's not on exam three. Vapor pressure and boiling point. Um, so here's the deal. When it comes to vapor pressure, that's just the thing, I want more than that. Um. I just want these three things. Because now I actually am just going to go in order of these three things that are not on the exam. Okay, so vapor pressure is the idea that we have liquids. Um, and some of this liquid is going into the vapor. When vapor pressure is equal to the atmospheric pressure. Then the liquid boils. Now. Think about this for a minute. I have liquids, some of it's going into the vapor phase. Usually the vapor pressure is lower than the atmospheric pressure. So atmospheric pressure is usually like something like one ATM. And my vapor pressure is usually something like point one, actually it's pretty, still pretty high. Usually even less than that. Um. So let's do a more, well, I guess we'll use point one just to make the number pretty. Um, but, but frankly, usually vapor pressure is, is something like point zero, zero, five ATMs. So it's, it's usually, usually low. Um. But vapor pressure, point one atmospheres. Now, one of the other things we didn't talk about in class, because you don't need it for the exam, is that vapor pressure will also go up as your temperature goes up. Which when you think about it, it should make sense. Because what's happening is if you increase the temperature. You're making all those molecules move back and forth a whole bunch. And since they're moving back and forth a whole bunch, they're not as attracted to each other. So you are basically decreasing the attractions between molecules as you do that. So the more you increase the temperature, the faster all the molecules move. The vapor pressure goes up. When your vapor pressure actually gets to one atmosphere, which is what the atmospheric pressure is at sea level at least. When your vapor pressure goes up. What happens is it boils because essentially the vapor pressure is the same as the atmospheric pressure, which means there's nothing to help the vapor pressure stay condensed anymore. Your vapor pressure is the same, everything. When vapor pressure is equal to atmospheric pressure, you get all vapor. You get nothing but vapor. And that boils because you don't have a liquid anymore if everything is turned to vapor. So everything just boils. This concept, by the way, is the reason why your boiling point changes when you go up on a mountain. So here's a mountain. I'm clearly from Texas, I've been in Texas too long. That's a mountain. And I'm trying to boil water up here. My atmospheric pressure is lower up here. So instead of being one ATM, let's say up here, my atmospheric pressure is zero point nine ATMs. The amount of heat needed to get my vapor pressure to go up is less. I still need my vapor pressure to rise with increasing temperature. But it doesn't have to rise as much because it doesn't have to get to as high of a pressure. Because the atmospheric pressure is lower. So as soon as the vapor pressure meets the atmospheric pressure, it boils. Whatever the atmospheric pressure is at. Also why we talk about things boiling when you're in a vacuum or when you're in space and you talk about things boiling, that's why. It's not temperature. It's the fact that you've lost the pressure. The pressure is really, really low, your vapor pressure getting to that pressure much, much easier. Okay. Does a charged ion affect the size? Yes. Yes, yes, it does. Um, so calcium two plus. And argon. So argon is over here, uh, eighteen, so this has eighteen protons and eighteen electrons. Calcium is over here, uh, twenty. So this, but it's plus two, so it's got eighteen, ah, I want to be at the same place. Um, twenty protons, eighteen electrons. So in general, notice that what we have happening here is I have twenty protons in calcium trying to hang on to eighteen electrons. So my argon is going to be of a particular size. And my calcium now is trying to hang on to the same number of electrons, but with more protons. So calcium is going to be smaller because it's got a greater positive charge hanging on to the same number of electrons. Positives and negatives attract. So calcium should be smaller because you have a greater positive charge hanging on to the same number of electrons. In general, the way size works is cations, positive things are smaller. Anions, negative things are larger. Because you can see the same effect with anions adding electrons. But you have the same number of protons to hang on to them. Therefore. Your anions get larger, same number of protons trying to hang on to more electrons. Your anions get larger. Last thing, uh, why does why beryllium's octet is weird and that makes us unhappy? So this is the one question that I really wish I just had a recording of Dr. Seibert explaining. Because Dr. Seibert is an inorganic chemist by training and I am not. So here's the thing. When we look at beryllium on a periodic table, first of all, it's hanging out in the alkali metal, in the alkali earth metals. Right? So if we were trying to describe beryllium, we do call this beryllium chloride. Because it's a, it's a metal. So beryllium is a metal, we name it as a metal. So, but beryllium close to the top of the periodic table. Beryllium is also very small. So as it forms, as it gets close to other elements, because of the distance in between and because of beryllium's size, beryllium forms what is better described as covalent bonds. So there was a time when we were talking about covalent bonds. And we drew covalents and we put polar covalent in the middle. And we put ionic here on the end and we said it's a spectrum. So this is the idea that while we do in general say, all right, that's a covalent bond. All right, that's an ionic bond. It's a spectrum. Beryllium's bonds are better described as covalent, even though by the periodic table, we would call them ionic. So therefore, we have this weird thing where if we looked at the periodic table and we said, ah, beryllium alkali earth metal. Beryllium positive two charge, chlorines, negative charge. We should expect them to come together with beryllium plus two chlorine chloride minus one. And we would expect to find formula units that look like this. But the truth is, is that the chlorine's got a large enough electron cloud. It's close enough to beryllium that it's better to describe these bonds not as ionic, but as covalent. So in order to basically kind of patch the reality where we know that when we do experiments with beryllium and its compounds, we get things that are more like covalent bonds. We therefore teach beryllium having an octet of four, which doesn't even make sense when I say it. But beryllium being satisfied with four as a patch. Because it's a way that we can teach you reality, which is that beryllium does in fact form things that look and act more like covalent bonds while still trying to maintain everything else we taught you about covalent bonds. But this is weird. And this is frankly, more like a metalloid property. So, so this is a weird thing. And this is really more like a metalloid where it's acting kind of like a metal. It's acting kind of like a non-metal. And that's also why I saved it for last because this is really more when you get into inorganic chemistry, which is, I forget if it's a junior or a senior level class. You get into more things of this nature where the world is more complicated and we can describe it. But sometimes elements have unique properties that don't fit the overall trends and you need ways to describe that. Okay. That is all of the questions. I think, well, that's all of the questions that I have, that I got. And that took about an hour. Actually, it's less time than I expected. So anyway, good luck. End of chapter questions. I highly, highly recommend the end of chapter questions to prepare y'all for this exam. Good luck. And I will see y'all next time.